President.
Johnson?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Smith? Paris? We have a quorum.
Do we have a motion to excuse Mayor Paris and Vice Mayor Smith?
So moved, so stated.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, we'll turn it over to the Housing Authority for Kitty.
Call to order the Housing Authority meeting, City Clerk roll call please.
Agency Director Crist?
Present.
Harvey?
Present.
Mann?
Present.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Chair Zetto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we're gonna have the invocation by Pastor Carlos Soes from the Salvation Army.
God, we thank you. We thank you for another day. We thank you, Father, for things that we take for granite like breeding. We're standing here right now. As we are about to start this meeting, Father, we ask your favor. We ask wisdom that comes from above. And we thank you also for the leadership of this city, for the great work that has been done, Father, and continue to be done here in this place. We ask that you bless each life, each family represented here today. Father, and may all will be done here, we ask that we do the right things. The right things will be done, decided here, and for the benefit of this community, this great city, the seat of Lancaster. We thank you, and we praise you. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Mann, will you do the pledge for us?
Put your right hand over your heart, raise the flag, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris at this time.
And her guest.
What can I say to that?
Brian. I was gonna put it in Vice Mayor Smith's seat.
Oh, thank you. I know better than that. See, you're just discombobulated, mate. They've been all Golden Lake Champions for the past four years. Do you know how hard it is to be on that swim team? I tried that in high school. I thought I was gonna die. I really, I really thought I was gonna die. Just to swim that length of that pool is unbelievably hard. And for you to be on the varsity as a freshman, what did your parents do to you? That ain't normal. He took first place in all four of his individual events at the 2012 Golden Lake Finals, placed third in the 200 individual medley, medley, yeah, at the 2012 CIF Southern Section Finals, and has competed at the CIF Southern Section Finals for three consecutive years. He's Antelope Valley Swimmer of the Year in 2012, and was named to the All Valley First Team for three consecutive years. Will be attending the best part, now this is really the best part, this is really a smart kid, because he's going to the University of California, Santa Barbara, which is exactly where I went after AV College, in the fall, and will be majoring in computer engineering, and I should have done that. Who knew? Has a cumulative GPA of 4.5 and was a member of the California Junior Scholastic Federation of 4.5. Come on down here, you did such a magnificent job. This is truly remarkable. And he volunteered for Assemblyman Steve Knight's office and participates in the Relay for Life program. Congratulations. That is... Does this ever go to your head? This is truly, truly outstanding. You're gonna have such a great time in Santa Barbara. You couldn't go to a better college. You know it's a party school.
And you have a thousand dollar scholarship.
Is David Clutter here? David, you grew up. You know, I knew him when he was 16 years old. Maybe he does.
That was just 10 years ago.
You were younger then.
And about the same color hair back then. David Clutter of Lancaster Honda. Tonight, we are recognizing Lancaster Honda for their generous donation of a new 2012 Honda Odyssey to... How did the City Parks get this new car? That's Odyssey to the City of Lancaster Parks Recreation and Arts Department. That's pretty cool. This new vehicle dubbed the Parks on Go van will be used to transport supplies and staff for special event programs throughout the city. David, we appreciate this generous donation by Lancaster Honda. Lancaster Honda was our first official city partner and continues to be one of our finest sponsors. Over the past five years, they have contributed substantially to the support city programs and events, including the annual California Poppy Festival and Park at the Park, to say nothing of the go-kart races. Lancaster Honda has been the premier sponsor of the city's annual Streets of Lancaster Grand Prix since its inception in 2009. You've been wonderful partners to the City of Lancaster.
Well, for over 20 years, it's been a pleasure.
And that's where I bought my Honda. I recommend it to everybody. And me and his father have been best friends for over 25 years now. We started our businesses at the same time. He hired me after I'd opened for a month, and actually paid me. Not too many people did that yet.
He's got more. You have three more.
I got four?
Yeah, over, right there, Rex.
On your right hand side, there you go.
Well, first of all, I'd like to, I know we have a full agenda, you have a full agenda tonight, so I really do appreciate the opportunity to recognize some of our hardest working personnel from Lancaster Station. For those that have never been here before, on this occasion, what we do is after each quarter of the year, we recognize five individuals for outstanding service. Three are our deputies of the quarter who have exceeded, far exceeded, the average workload at Lancaster Station. Lancaster Station, if you're not aware, is one of the busiest stations in the county. So for somebody to be that far above the average when it comes to productivity is truly amazing, because most people just hang on and try to stay afloat. So again, I do appreciate this opportunity. And with that, I'd like to call up our three deputies of the quarter for the past quarter, and that's Deputy Rea, David Hicks, and John Thorne. Now, some of you may know John or met him before, because he's one of our top producing traffic officers, does an amazing job. Jeff and David are both our training officers, one on early mornings and one on PMs, so they work the busiest shifts at the station as well. So again, their efforts are truly appreciated. So congratulations. Now, the next award we always give out is our Investigator of the Quarter. And this investigator, I have to tell you, if you've been reading the papers recently in the last few months, we've seen a rise in robberies within the City of Lancaster in an unincorporated area. And at the beginning of the year, we developed a robbery suppression team, and he's been one of the key investigators on that team since the inception. And if you've been following these cases in the paper, you know that if somebody's foolish enough to commit a robbery in the City of Lancaster, they are probably gonna be caught with about a 99% certainty. They are that good at what they're doing right now, their apprehension rate is absolutely astonishing, and they're putting these people back in prison or in prison for the first time for a long, long time, so they won't be able to wreak havoc on this city or this community for years to come. So I'd like to send my appreciation to him and recognize him as our Investigator of the Quarter, Mark Donnell. And our final recognition is to an employee that we do at the professional level. She just came to Lancaster Station at the beginning of the year, and her attitude and professionalism is such a refreshing, I just really, really appreciate it. She works our dispatch area, and for those that aren't aware, that's the first line of communication with the Sheriff's Department. When somebody calls in, they take the information, they process it, they send the units out. And she is extremely pleasant, polite, and her professionalism is just greatly, greatly appreciated. She's a great asset to the station and this community, and I'd like to recognize Maria Villalobos.
No, he can come. He's looking good. Are you gonna take a picture?
That was good.
She has taken his picture before. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Back on script. Ladies and gentlemen, the Consent Calendar consists of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the authority or council takes action on the consent calendar. The authority, sounds like True Blood, you know that? Not that I watch True Blood, but... All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda, non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Any agenda items to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Chairman Sato.
Okay, we do not have any speaker cards for the Housing Authority minutes, so do we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Housing Authority regular minutes of July 24, 2012?
Moving to approve the minutes.
I second. Let's vote.
Okay, the minutes have been approved. I will now turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris.
Thank you. Okay, successor agency actions. We'll now hear the staff report regarding SA NB1 from Finance Director Barbara Boswell.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and council members. You have before you for consideration approval of our recognized obligation payment schedule for the successor agency obligations for the period January 1, 2013 through June 30, 2013. You may recall that the dissolution act, the redevelopment dissolution act requires adoption of the obligation schedules on six-month, for six-month periods. AB 1484 made a couple of changes, one of which changed the due date of the obligation schedule, which now the schedule is due to the Department of Finance by September 1. They changed the format, and we didn't have much notice, so unfortunately, this was the first meeting that we could get this to you for adoption and approval. There are, we have requested or proposed adoption of Resolution SA 04-12 approving the recognized obligation payment schedule. If approved, it will then go before the Oversight Board for approval, and then on to the County Auditor Controller, Department of Finance, and State Controller's Office. The obligations on the schedule are the various bond payments and reserves that need to be funded and other obligation note payments that we need to make. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? There are no speaker cards, is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution Number SA 04-12.
Is there a second?
I second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. SA NB2. There are no speaker cards, you wanna waive the report? Let's waive the report, is there a motion?
A motion that we adopt Resolution Number SA 0512.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to the council agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve M1.
Second?
Second.
Let's vote. Unanimous. One abstention, I'm sorry. That was Mr. Mann, you... Consent calendar, anything to be removed?
Do we have any speaker cards?
No.
I'll move we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. JNB1 for the successor agency in the... I guess it's the City Council, is that correct? Okay. There are no speaker cards, wanna waive? Any report?
I'd like to hear the report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Before you for consideration is a resolutions that would approve a loan from the City of Lancaster to the Lancaster Successor Agency to fund administrative expenses for the period July 2012 to December 2012. This loan is necessary because the obligations on the schedule that we had for that period exceeded the amount of funds that we received from the County of LA. Therefore, there were no administrative allowance funds provided by the County Auditor Controller. We have a need to provide administrative support. We have reports that are due to the Department of Finance, we have audits that are required, and we have some other legal activities that require funding. The AB 1484 did provide a new provision to the redevelopment dissolution that did allow for loans from sponsoring communities such as City of Lancaster to successor agencies, and that those loans would then become enforceable obligations and could then be reimbursed through future property tax funds as funds become available. Without the loan, there is no, there are no funds available for administrative support, and quite frankly, we still are required to do the work, so at least this loan makes it an obligation that in the future we could get reimbursed for the work that we're going to be doing anyway.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can we do this resolution jointly? David?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1260?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number SA 06-12?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay. NB1, I can't vote on this, I assume it comes... Says I have a conflict, but I can listen to the presentation?
Yes, the presentation you can listen to. One of the streets to be repaved is near a property that you own.
Okay, Robert Neal. This is actually an exciting thing, let's...
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Staff is here tonight to tell you about a new direction we are taking with our pavement management program, and to request your approval to move forward with a cutting-edge project that will use REHEAT technology for the very first time in California. REHEAT stands for Recycled Hot Emulsified Asphalt Treatment. You'll learn a little bit more about that in just a couple minutes. Like most California cities, our roads are deteriorating because of lack of maintenance dollars. Some years back, we conducted an extensive inventory of our roadways and developed a comprehensive pavement management program. With the downturn in the economy, there hasn't been adequate funds for this program, but because of some excellent staff work, we will turn this situation around. It involves changing our philosophy about pavement maintenance and using innovative processes that we have strong reason to believe will work. Here to tell you more about our approach are Ray Hunt, our Capital Engineering Manager, and Richard Long, our Public Works Maintenance Manager. With your permission, I will ask Ray to lead off this presentation on how we will do more with less. Ray?
Good evening, council. I'd first like to start by saying we have always included pavement preservation in the execution of our pavement management program. What we're talking about is a shift to the increased use of pavement preservation to lead our pavement management program on improving our streets. Pavement preservation is the application of low-cost successive pavement treatments to extend the life of a pavement. I'd like to also tell you that everything that we discuss today is gonna be conducted and executed within the current budget constraints and utilizing city staff. The first step in the, the step towards increasing pavement preservation is an action presented before you deny it for the award and the use of REHEAT. REHEAT is a revolutionary advancement in the hot-in-place asphalt recycling. It is a, it's an alternative to conventional mill and overlay process, and with our action tonight, we'll be the first city in the state of California to utilize REHEAT, a technology that's gaining traction across the US. With us tonight, I have Pat Faster with Gallagher Asphalt Construction, sitting in the back there. He's the contractor that will perform REHEAT for us if the motion is so awarded. He's a division manager at Gallagher, but in addition, he's the president of the Asphalt Recycling and Reclaiming Association, industry liaison with FHWA, the Federal Highway Administration's Expert Task Group, and advisor on several other notable pavement preservation associations. With that, I'd like to show you a short video on REHEAT.
With our recycled hot emulsified asphalt treatment, or REHEAT, you can 100% recycle old worn-out asphalt roads with virtually no aggregate. REHEAT is the only one-step asphalt recycling process in the world that does not need an overlay. REHEAT is accomplished with a train of just two machines that occupy a small work zone of just 200 feet at a time. The process starts with an asphalt preheater that uses clean burning propane and a one-of-a-kind radiant convection burner system, producing a six-inch thermal transfer into the pavement to be recycled, quickly heating the old asphalt to a temperature of 350 to 400 degrees. The preheater is then immediately followed by the REHEAT recycling machine. Its patented hardened steel auger assembly shears the existing asphalt, lifting and rolling the heated material, preventing it from being fractured, thus preserving its structural integrity. The heated asphalt is instantly loaded into an onboard asphalt plant by a patented center mill. This keeps the material from being exposed to outside elements, preserving the critical fines in the mix and thus preventing segregation. The newly rejuvenated asphalt comes pouring out of the back of the onboard asphalt plant, is then laid out by a conventional paving street with full grade and slope controls. The recycled asphalt is easily compacted with a single steel drum hydrostatic roller. The newly recycled asphalt can be driven on just 10 minutes after it has been rolled. With REHEAT, you have old weathered road in the front and newly recycled asphalt roadway coming out of the back, in one step, in a matter of minutes.
And it is just that easy. We witness the application of REHEAT firsthand. REHEAT is 100% sustainable, will save us up to 25% in construction costs to conventional methods, and has a 66% reduced carbon footprint compared to traditional methods. The thing that turned us on to REHEAT the most is the fact that this is a recycling of existing asphalt pavement that requires no additional asphalt for the riding surface, which is available to be ridden on, driven on, 10 minutes after its construction, and the fact that it does not segregate aggregate and it keeps the structural stability of the pavement section. But again, REHEAT is just the beginning steps in our shift to pavement preservation. Many of you may recognize this graph. It's been presented in previous council meetings for our pavement management program. What we have here is the red line represents the typical lifecycle curve of an asphalt pavement. Starts off in great excellent condition, and over a period of its life, it degrades to a failed condition if nothing is applied or it's not treated in some way. The solid black line represents low-cost successive pavement treatments to a street in relatively good condition. I should note that most, all the costs shown on this graph are represented in a square foot price. The dashed black line represents the rehabilitation of a street in poor condition where the street is near the point of structural failure. Further you go down the curve, the more expensive the treatments. With our shift to... With our shift to increased pavement management, we plan to utilize pavement preservation techniques in all pavement conditions, provided there hasn't been structural failure. So utilizing low-cost pavement preservation throughout the lifecycle of a pavement, provided there is no structural failure. This graph, this chart is an important one. I stole it from North Ventura County presentation, but it demonstrates exactly what we plan to do here with pavement preservation, and so I'm going to take some time to explain it. The left side of the chart represents the lane miles treated, the right side, the pavement condition index of the overall roadway network, and the fiscal years represented at the bottom. You notice in fiscal year 1011, they had a $55 million pavement management program. I wish. And for that, they were able to increase their pavement condition index two points to 72, which is representative of a good pavement roadway network. And they accomplished that with a scope of work that included the pavement preservation of 240 lane miles of roads. They applied resurfacing technologies to 140 lane miles, and 60 lane miles was targeted for rehab reconstruction. But with the downturn in the economy and what we're faced with challenged revenue sources, they had to decrease... Their pavement management program received less funding in subsequent years. But you'll notice they maintained an increase in the pavement condition index and was strongly associated with the fact that they maintained a level of pavement preservation. In fiscal year 1314, they anticipated an increase in their pavement condition index to 75, utilizing half the budget of the pavement management program as compared to fiscal year 1011, and it's done primarily with an emphasis on pavement preservation. This is exactly what we're planning to do, to do more with the less amount of money that we have currently. Now, in addition to innovative technologies like REHEAT, we plan on implementing our shift to pavement preservation with a two-fold approach, with both Maintenance Service Division and Capital Engineering Division playing key roles. And with that, I'll turn over to Richard Long, Maintenance Service Division Manager, to share with you Maintenance Services' role in pavement preservation.
Thank you, Ray. Mayor, Council. As the Maintenance Services Division Manager in the Department of Public Works, pavement maintenance or pavement management is crucial to our operations, and I just appreciate the opportunity to present on this tonight. Pavement management has always been the nexus between the Capital Engineering Group and the Maintenance Services Division. In these difficult economic times, it has had a significant impact on our ability to maintain our road network. I'm excited about this shift to pavement preservation. I think it's going to increase the collaboration between the two divisions, and it's going to provide a substantial benefit to the city and its residents. As an integral part of the pavement management program, the Maintenance Services Division will be responsible for executing and managing maintenance-level work in the pavement management program. Maintenance-level work, as defined in the Public Contract Code, is preservation or protection work on any publicly owned or operated facility to a minimum depth of one inch. So we are limited as to what we can do in this area, but I'd like to present those items to you. In the coming months, we'll be returning back to Council with contracts for your approval that will support the pavement preservation program, contracts that will procure specialized equipment, contracts that will identify material vendors and service providers, all directly related to this pavement preservation. Most importantly, and I emphasize, this will all be funded out of the approved fiscal year 1213 budget. Pavement preservation consists of numerous asphalt treatments that ultimately extend the life of the existing pavement. Fog seals are the backbone of pavement preservation. They rejuvenate oxidized asphalt, and they restore pavement flexibility. I guess, in a way to relate it to you, just look at fog seal as an SPF 30 with aloe. All right? I mean, we're protecting our streets from deteriorating. Fog seals also minimize water intrusion that can ultimately result or accelerate the need for more costly rejuvenation treatments. This slide is indicative of a typical street before and after a fog seal. As you can see on the left, we have a very... A street in fairly good condition, very good condition. But you can see it has a little bit of gray. It's beginning to oxidize. The asphalt becomes brittle, and that fog seal works as a rejuvenator. Typically, fog seals are applied between five and seven years of construction or reconstruction. So again, preventative maintenance. Scrub and chip seals, these are applied to streets that are in progressively worse condition where cracking is beginning to occur. These seals include additional aggregate that adds strength to the pavement and also improve rigability. On the scrub seals, we do have the ability to eliminate crack seal operations, so we're going to kind of lose that spider web effect that we've seen around town. Both of these treatments provide improved skid resistance and seals the pavement from further water intrusion. The following slides will demonstrate a typical scrub chip seal. As you can see, this would be a service provider, an emulsion company, that would supply the emulsion for us as well as the spray rig, and here they're applying the scrub seal to the street, followed by a application of rock aggregate, which is then rolled into the street with a final application of a broom-type sweeper that would remove any residual rock from the street and the gutter. Cape seals. Cape seals are the application of micro-surfacing or slurries on top of a chip seal. When a smoother, more aesthetic surface is desirable, such as in a neighborhood, cape seals may be applied. This is an example of a typical roadway that a cape chip seal or a chip cape seal would be applied. And as you can see, this is a picture three years after the treatment. Still in very good condition. It's evident that the preservation treatments were able to extend the street life and delay what would ultimately have been more costly reconstruction. We are ready to begin this shift in pavement preservation and anxious to realize the added value in terms of extended life and reduced costs. So I'm going to turn this back to Ray now, who will provide you with more in-depth information on that added value. Thank you very much.
Now, this is where it gets exciting. So if I start talking too fast, I apologize. The chip cape seal applied here was applied for a cost of 40 cents per square foot. As compared to conventional methods and contracting, we would have spent about $1.10 a square foot. That's a 64% savings in the cost. And it's not just because of the methodology, but it has... It's basically because Maintenance Services Division will be executing the work. So we're not contracting it out. We're doing it in-house with contracted material suppliers and equipment that we own. That's where the savings comes from. This is a great example of the type of street that Maintenance Services Division can apply pavement preservation techniques. This is Red Rover Mine Road in LA County. The LA County Department of Public Works applied a double chip seal. Double chip seal is just emulsion, rock, emulsion, rock. But here's what it looks like afterwards. I'm still blown away every time I see this picture because I can't believe a double chip seal makes a road look brand-new and for such a cheap price. They were able to accomplish this for 70 cents per square foot. Conventional technologies and contracting, if they contracted it out, would have cost about $1.70 a square foot. Put this in different terms, two miles of Red Rover Mine Road was accomplished for about $185,000. Compared to conventional methods of contracting and repair work, would have cost $450,000. 185 versus 450. That's the difference between doing the work and not doing the work, having happy constituents and having them still calling the city for repairing Red Rover Mine Road. Here's a final example on how pavement preservation can be applied. This road had a pavement condition index of 21. A 21 on a scale of 100 is indicative of a road that is in very poor condition. But pavement preservation techniques can be applied because the majority of the road had sound structural... Was sound structurally. You see in the picture, there's some white paint. Those are identified locations that required digouts. There were identified locations where the subgrade and/or the pavement section had failed. So with a little digouts and repair, so digouts meaning removal and replacement of the asphalt, the base, and the subgrade soil, with a couple minor repairs in advance of a chip cape seal, we see significant savings. Here's the emulsion and the chip was applied, and here's after the cape seal was applied. This is a picture two years after construction completion. So what'd they accomplish? They extended the life of this roadway eight years, and they did it at 28% of the cost of a traditional overlay. Now, a traditional overlay may have given us 10 to 11 years extended life period, but it would have been at over three times the amount that it took the pavement preservation treatment. So with savings of $215,000, you can apply it to additional roads that need pavement preservation. You can use that money for roadways whose only option is a more expensive reconstruction. Now, all the work discussed thus far is work that Maintenance Services Division could accomplish per the Public Contract Code. The balance of work will continue to be executed through the Capital Engineering Division. This is all work that's an inch or greater in overall thickness. The work will be competitively bid, as we do currently, and it will include both pavement preservation and rehabilitation reconstruction projects. As demonstrated by our desire to utilize REHEAT, we are dedicated to the implementation of sustainable, green, innovative technologies to increase the pavement condition for our city. We already utilized green technologies that recycle our pavements, including full-depth reclamation, cold-in-place recycling, central plant recycling. We've won a couple awards in the last handful of years for our pavement management program, for our progressive approach. With the award of REHEAT tonight and our continuing shift to increased pavement preservation, we're very excited to see, you know, the condition of our streets in two years' time. The pavement management program will increase the number of roads that we're able to accomplish through this shift. And with that, I'd like to thank the Council and city management for their continued support and their leadership in identifying new technologies and methodologies and implementing them and making them a reality. So with that, I'd like to open up for any questions you may have for me or my colleagues at Gallagher Construction.
Any questions? I do. How many times can you REHEAT it?
Question. Is it limited? Come on up.
It would depend on the service treatment that you put on it over time. If it's asphalt treatments over the top, you can continue to do that for the next 12 or 15 years. I could say that for 30 years. If you started applying some pavement preservation...
Would you come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, go over everyone.
Just want to be able to hear you on the mic.
Sorry.
We just want to be able to hear you on the mic.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
It depends on the preventative maintenance treatments that you would use on the pavement. All that were presented here are great ideas. You can put a chip seal on it and fog seals and cape seals and so on and so forth. After they start building up after a little bit, that road may possibly not be a candidate for recycling again, which is fine. By that time, the structural issue down below may have, well, started its demise, and it may need to be milled out and filled anyhow. So typically, we're going to recycle a roadway one time. We can come back 12, 15 years later, do it a second time. You won't see us typically on it a third time. The road's shot by then, so it's a good question.
Okay. Let's... So the chip seal, we do with our own equipment, right?
We will.
The first thing you showed us, where we REHEAT it, REHEAT it and then reseal it, that we farm out, right?
Correct. That's contracted out.
And so why aren't we just buying the trucks and doing it ourselves?
Doing what? The chip seal yourself?
No, the...
The... Well, that's a reasonable question, I guess. We have produced this equipment ourselves.
I hope so.
As a contractor. I think probably a $6 million price tag might scare you, number one. Registration with the AQMD, Air Quality Management District for the state of California, there's a fast $100,000 we spent over there manning and equipping and putting the right guys and the equipment might deter you from wanting to step up and buy your own equipment. If you want to be in the contractor business, I think, you know, that's certainly something you can entertain. You can't typically go to a manufacturer, Caterpillar, or Workin, or Road Tech and pick these things up. We have subcontracted these machines built to our specifications. And in the top five hot-in-place recyclers in the country, which we are the third, that's how they all do it the same way. So if they're not building them themselves, they're subcontracting to a small machine shop that'll build it over the winter months typically for us. So it's... You can't get online and find them, I guess, would be the shortcut answer. And the price tags.
How about your employees? Are they going to be local? Where are they? You're from Illinois?
We're from Chicago. Yes, sir.
So are your employees from Chicago?
Yes, they would be. Not all of them. Recycling isn't our primary function in life. We're the largest asphalt producer, highway contractor in the state of Illinois. This is one division that Gallagher, who's been in business for 90 years, has. I happen to run that division. The piece of equipment that they're entertaining here for your city, it requires 10 guys and a foreman. There'd be an 11-man crew. Pretty special stuff. If we could hire a local guy to do this or that or the other thing, we do, we will. Of the 10 working men, we will probably employ four, possibly five, local people. The rest of them, it's too special that I can't take someone out of a union hall or off of another piece of equipment and expect them to run this one efficiently. So there'll be some local folks put on this train, the union guys. We're a union shop, and I would say a minimum of four, probably not to exceed five.
How long is this going to run, the contract?
It's 110,000 square yards, which would take us anywhere from 25 to 30 days.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Robert, price it out.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I can't vote. Marvin, you want to take over the meeting?
Sure.
Do we have any discussion? Mr. Man?
No, I just... Well, I do want to say, before we actually started the city council meeting, I was talking to Robert, and I says, "It's funny how somebody could get excited about asphalt." But to me, I'm so impressed with the staff going out and taking a look at different technologies. This is another example, under Rex's leadership, where we've gotten what I would consider state-of-the-art technology. We've done it in several instances, and this is another one where the staff has done an excellent job. And again, I could do the math real quick. I was talking to Robert about the cost savings and the number of miles that we're going to be able to do. So there may be some risk, although we've been told tonight of the... They've been in business for several years. I think it's going to be a home run for the city. I just get that feeling that here's another one where we're going to be able to do several miles of paving. And definitely with that timeframe that he quoted, 25 days for the number of miles, that's fast, really fast. So I'm impressed.
I agree with you, Ken. I think you're absolutely right. And with the leadership of our mayor, I think with him setting the tone that we, the City of Lancaster, we don't complain, we do something about it. That's exactly what you have set the tone, and with the company that's coming here, we applaud you for being here with the City of Lancaster and us setting the tone of not complaining, but actually doing something about it. So it's a great job.
Kay?
You know, I actually have a question for Mark. I know the gentleman said that this is within our budget. Is it below our budget?
We would anticipate using the full budget the Council approved to do as many lay-mile streets, et cetera, as we have. As Robert said, we have a pavement maintenance where we prioritize, and we would never have enough in one year to get all the way down there. But it will be within the budget Council approved on June 26. to get that in front of the commander over there, especially with the sixty-six percent reduction in carbon footprint and being a hundred percent sustainable. I'm pressed out of gate with that, so.
We could do a JPA.
We can.
That's actually what I was going to recommend, is that can we, can we look at, with the city of Palmdale, maybe the county, and buying one of these?
We have, well, there are some restrictions, which we'd have to get into California Contract Code, as they said, about going more than one inch in something. But one of the ideas we do have, not to get too much into our business model, is if we're the first to do it, we can help other people do it at a price. Save money and make some for the city. So we absolutely do plan on that.
Jason's been involved in this, hasn't he?
We have all put our heads together and come up with a decent.
See his fingerprints all over this.
Okay, good. Okay. But are we, can we look at doing it so we can not pump 1.1 million to Illinois?
Well, on this particular contract before you, it's to hire this firm.
I, I understand that. In the future? Yes, absolutely. When we, I understand it's going to be a process that we go through, obtaining some equipment and doing that kind of stuff? Absolutely. Okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
I'll move that. We award the Public Works Contract Project 12-009, pavement preservation reheat asphalt project.
I second.
Let's vote. It's three to nothing.
With me abstaining.
With the mayor abstaining? I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, NB two. We have one speaker card on that, so let's hear from Jason.
Mayor and council, along the lines of joint powers agreements today, we're asking the council to approve a resolution to adopt an agreement between the city of San Jacinto and the city of Lancaster, forming and creating the California Clean Energy Authority. As you recall, the council authorized staff to begin looking at partners to join us in our solar ventures. Since that time, we've been identified and been reported that we are the, at least at this point, California's verified solar capital of the world, installing up to the one hundred and thirty-four kilowatts per resident, as compared to our competitor, or our next, I shouldn't say competitor, our next second city in implementation of the California Solar Initiative of forty. So we have set ourselves apart and above any other cities that relates to the implementation of the California Solar Initiative. With this and with utilization of joint powers agreements, we have the ability to expand this on a statewide basis. The California Clean Energy Authority is the first joint powers agreement that's specifically been created to expand and enhance solar opportunities in other communities. San Jacinto is the first city to join us. We're looking for other cities to partner, but to use San Jacinto and expand our model of operations relates to solar energy, to not only create revenue opportunities for those cities, but also create the jobs and economic development that come along with the solar energy programs. The, the partnership itself, and I think is oftentimes the JPAs are underutilized, joint powers agreements allow agencies with like powers to join forces, expand jurisdictional authority, create certain protections from a liability standpoint, and allow cities to work better together. And that's the message we've sent to San Jacinto, that's the message we're sending other cities, is doing work together, utilizing special skills that have been established through experience and success, make it more efficient for that city partnering, and make it more effective in the implementation of these programs. So we hope that this first exercise is an opportunity for, for San Jacinto. We haven't made them any promises, nor do we make the city council any promises, but we do promise is an opportunity to create something special in their city that they haven't done yet. They, too, their population about forty-four thousand people, they, too, suffer from high unemployment, the need for long-term sustainable revenues, and this is a perfect opportunity for us to partner with them, their city council, their city staff, to try to expand what we've created here. The California Clean Energy, you serve as the management authority over the California Clean Energy Authority under this joint powers agreement, and individual cities will partner through individual contracts with the California Clean Energy Authority. So San Jacinto may have a different program than our next city that we, we bring in, in the fold. But this arrangement between San Jacinto and Lancaster now create the California Clean Energy Authority, which you will be serving as the board members. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and look forward to the success.
So when are we going to be bigger than Google?
We got, we got a long way to go, Mayor. But there are, we are, we are, we are exploring a number of different opportunities, and I think that's what's interesting, is there's so many opportunities out there in the solar industry. Rebates, incentives, programs, you go down the list, from battery storage to solar generation to smart grid technologies to, you know, you go down the list of what we can do collectively as cities, and the, the opportunities are endless, that's for sure.
Thank you. Any questions?
Great job.
Yeah, I just want to say today is the day that we made history.
Hope so.
Yep.
Good.
Anthony Disney.
Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you so much for letting me come up here tonight and speak. I just want to say I'm really happy that Lancaster is continuing to lead the way in the solar, as Jason mentioned, being the solar capital of California is fantastic.
No, 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 that's not what he said.
Capital of the world, leader in California, yes. Thank you for that. And I think this, this authority to work with other cities and share the model that's been established is a wonderful idea. I'm very excited about that. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Paving the Way Foundation. We're a local nonprofit here in Lancaster. We have been involved with some of the local solar energy efforts in the employment aspect. We work in many fields, but we have worked on getting people from a place of unemployment to being trained in the solar industry, to being, working on these projects that are happening right in Lancaster. And we're excited to be a part of that and to be a part of all the things that are happening here. I just want to be able to be here this, this evening and speak to you and say we are happy to have been a part of that process. We would encourage, as you go forward, and share your model with other cities, to show them how you've been able to help the local economy and the local workforce be employed in some of these great efforts that are happening. Everybody's excited about green energy. Everybody's excited about solar and implementing it, and it's a real opportunity for a local workforce that might be unemployed, underemployed, underserved, to have a new career option. So we've, Paving the Way has been able to help get people into the solar industry, and we're excited that it's, you've had an opportunity to employ people here in Lancaster and get people new lives, new options, new jobs. And I just want to commend you on your efforts and say that as you go forward with other cities, I hope they take advantage of being able to not only help the city and the utilities and save on energy, but also to help their workforce find a new career. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that, so thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
You know, we should consider, when we do these deals with the different solar companies, of having one agency that they hire through, which would then enable us to, to filter that, that workforce by address. Other ways, too, but you, you follow me? We should look at that. And maybe those are the guys to do it with, I don't know. All right? Any questions? I think we get around a lot of, a lot of prohibitions that way, if we just directed them to an agency. Let's talk about that, all right? Good.
Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt resolution number one-two-five-nine.
I second.
Good sir. And we're on our way.
Good job, Jason.
Well.
I must note.
Let's, let's see how it ends up.
And I have to give a, I have to give a comment to some of the staff that have been working with, they've done an excellent job. Heather Swan's in the audience, and without her, this, this frankly would not have happened either, so kudos to her.
If we, if we hang somebody from a lamppost, it's going to be you. I mean, you know, I'm being funny as usual, but there's some risk in what we're doing. But it, it will mean the difference, I think, ultimately between us being one of those cities that collapsed economically and one of those cities that ascend. Right now, I really like what you're doing. It, it looks like we're going in the right direction, but I don't want anybody to be misled. We are charting paths that no one else has done. Eventually, one of these things isn't going to work. Hopefully, we have enough things that are working, it's not going to matter. But just so you know. Thanks.
NB three?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the last council meeting, we considered a draft ordinance, and following that meeting, there was a, a meeting of various staff members, Councilmember Chris, with members of the public concerning various issues that arose that were presented during the meeting on the skateboard restrictions. As a result of that meeting, we have come back with a revised ordinance. It includes a provision requiring helmets, and it also provides for a slightly pared-down scope of restrictions in terms of, as you see on the map that's on the screen now, trying to limit the, the restriction area to the, to the areas where there really is a problem. And I think maybe Councilmember Chris might want to add some things to that, but this is the result of that meeting we have with the, with the public members.
We had a great discussion. We tried to look at everyone's concerns that they had, the skateboarders. There were some people on the east side of the tracks that used the boulevard for transition to get to school with, so we had to look at that concern. That's why we opened up, if you'll see, in front of the sheriff's station, we opened up the boulevard at that point, so they have access through beach to get through the backstreets to the other side of the, to schools and that. So we opened that up, and then there was one major thing that we all could agree on, and that was skateboarders and pedestrians don't belong in the same place. So the individuals from the pharmacy agreed with that. We had Patrick from the artist lofts, we had Karen that was representing the boulevard. So we had three people from the pharmacy, Nathan, Donovan, and Jeremy. They all came in, so we worked out basically a compromise. And the compromise is, is that we're going to shut down the boulevard, or propose to shut down the boulevard to all skateboarder traffic. But on the east side of all the streets, the skateboarders will be allowed to transition from that point, from the side streets to the boulevard. Once they reach the boulevards, then they can get off the skateboard and carry them from that point. That's where the pharmacy can still survive there, and the pedestrians can be on one side of the street and the skateboarders can be on the other side of the street. There were other proposals. There were individuals that said, as far as fines and what we should do to them, is to confiscate the skateboards, but we're going to leave it as a $25 fine, just, you know, leave it low. The individuals from the pharmacy, Donovan, which is one of the owners, said that the pharmacy would like the opportunity to police its own people. What? That's what he said. He said that they can, that they understand that about ten percent of the skateboarders are actually the problem, and if they can police them or have the opportunity to police them, then they could do that. So I think that's what we should give them the opportunity to do.
I'm a little nervous about that language. I really am. I think that the moment we start saying things like that, it has unintended consequences. I don't know. I think they should work with the sheriff's department.
I think what they don't want is they don't want all the streets shut off. We did tell them that we will work with them with a, he said that he could get some individual private financing to build a skateboard park. The city, we looked at different methods in which we can do that. I spoke with Mark earlier in regards to that, so there are different methods in which we can use to, to look at that and have the majority of the skateboarders over in Heroes Park. So.
I'm up for that. Is there a motion? Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes.
Oh, we do. Michael Reeves. I didn't know you were a boarder, Michael.
Mayor, council, mayor, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank Councilman Chris for briefing me on the proposal that he and the people worked out, and as you well remember from last meeting, I'm a former skateboarder, and I'm also a libertarian, and I'm very wary of restricting access and freedom expression for people, but I realize that, you know, you can't cry "fire" in a crowded theater, and you can't intimidate people on streets with your skateboards. However, I think this ordinance goes, at this time, goes beyond what we want to do. We want to preserve the boulevard for everyone to be safe and neat. We also want to give the skateboarders access to streets on the other side of the boulevard so they can go through their ways from Tenth Street to Sierra. This is very complicated to me. I, I prefer that we go ahead and ban the skateboarders from the boulevard, give them access on the side streets, and see how that works. And then if, at another time, we get a skateboard park, we can revisit this, but let, let's make it simple, uncomplicated. And another thing, you're bringing up the fact about the helmets for kids, and you're going to find them and stuff. We, we have other things to do in the city besides go after kids because they're not wearing a helmet. That's another thing we can visit. So I propose that you amend this ordinance, just ban the skateboarders from the boulevard, and we'll deal with the other issues as they come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Let me address a couple of things real quick. We did talk about, in fact, I had to twist the city attorney's arm to getting to put the helmet law in there, because we were told that it's already law. We were just expressing it to make it, that the skateboarders are aware of it. It's already a law that they have to wear them, so it's not something that we're doing, we're just adding on to it. And we did talk about the different stuff as far as the parking areas, we talked about curfew, we talked about the group mentality of some of the skateboarders have. So it was a good meeting. And with that, I'd like to introduce ordinance number nine-eighty and adopt resolution 12-56.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Marvin, thank you for taking this on. The fact that the room isn't filled with people indicates that you really did work out a compromise with people, and it wasn't an easy task. A lot of people were invested. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Oh, Councilman Mann is going to tell us how we end up paying more for sanitation fees. Way to go, Ken.
Yeah.
Ken, what happened? Actually, Ken actually did this, I wasn't able to go, he did it, he took the hit, hit. It was really my hit to take, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I do want to make sure that everybody is aware. I, I made an apology specifically to the seniors, because we had several of them that came up before us and spoke, and very sensitive to the fact that when you're on a fixed budget, you know, I suspect I could work an extra hour, and there's a few of us that could probably work an extra hour, but when you're a senior, you're retired and you're in your seventies or eighties, and you're trying to make do with what we currently have, and having this increase. And very sensitive to the fact that when you're on a fixed budget, you know, I suspect I could work an extra hour, and there's a few of us that could probably work an extra hour, but when you're a senior, you're retired, and you're in your 70s or 80s, and you're trying to make do with what we currently have, and having this increase, it was pretty frustrating for me to vote. But, again, one of the things that we do in the City of Lancaster is we pay our bills. And then the second thing I apologize for, I kind of wish I'd gotten involved with politics sooner, because I think that if I'd have been involved in the sanitation district eight, 10 years ago, I don't think we would have bought the Maserati, because that's essentially what we did. We bought the most expensive thing that you could possibly buy, and we've got a sitting mayor to the south. Unfortunately, that was part of that. And again, it's so frustrating, I just don't think that we needed this. I really don't. But we've got it now, so now I guess the best thing for us to do is to run as tight a budget as we possibly can and keep costs down. That's the only thing I can see that we can do.
I was at the meeting, the prior meeting that you had, and I have to give you credit for lowering the prices that the restaurants had to pay. You were very instrumental, and all the restaurants in the town, they were paying up to $25,000 apiece. And I guess you got some type of plan for them, too, where they can show their water rates and to show what they're putting in.
No, no, no. What it ended up doing, and this is what I hopefully will be able to go back and do, because I understand that the meeting I did miss, they scrapped the proposal of going back and doing a study, but ultimately, what came out of the reduction, a 30% reduction to the restaurants, is they were using a study from the late 70s, early 80s, to calculate what is going into the waste stream. And then the decision was made to run a new study, and lo and behold, we found out that they had over-calculated it. My sneaky suspicion, there's probably more of that. So, I would hope that we get that back on the agenda at some point in time. And like I said, we're stuck with the Maserati, so I guess we're going to have to figure out how to run it as lean as we possibly can. So, that's my opinion.
What area does that service, that plant?
Well, it's our plant, so it does a small portion of Palmdale, which takes in the mall and runs all of, and comes of all of the City of Lancaster, and a portion of the unincorporated area.
So, wait a minute, the plant that services Palmdale, how does it compare?
Well, the costs were very similar. I think that although I didn't bother myself with the costs that they passed on to the other sanitation district, but they're very similar. Because again, it's a, again, state-of-the-art plant, Rex. This is, there's only, there's only a few of them in the state of California. Now, this is a super plant, super filtration. Ultimately, that's what it can become, so I'm not that I'm advocating that we're going to be drinking sewage water, but...
Get used to it, we're going to. Make no mistake, the water, the water situation is so bad, and only getting worse, that, get used to it. I mean, we can act like we're not going to do it, but we are. I mean, it's either going to be that or not drink. I mean, isn't that what's going to happen?
Well, I know there's several cities in Los Angeles that's on recycled water. Long Beach is one of the cities, so that they're actually drinking recycled water, so, or recycled sewage water. Let's hope it's a long time off. Let's hope that we find some other alternative solutions for our water situation in the country.
There are some benefits to being old. Some things we will not see come to pass. All right.
And bottled water.
That's as bad. I mean, you know, the poisons that leach into these things. You know, one little bout of cancer, it's amazing how you look at things differently. All right. No action on the financing authority, no action on the power authority, city manager. Any announcements?
One, we had a very good meeting, and I appreciate the comments of council and the mayor. We're a very creative staff, and we stay focused and try to do a lot of things, but a lot of it is to continue to provide services and stuff. And while this doesn't always get maybe the attention it deserves, I find this project incredibly creative, and I wanted to go over a couple of stats. The concept of a 24-hour recycling center sounds so simple, but no one's done it. And we have one that's been done. So, if you want to clean your garage at 2:00 a.m. and you have used oil, now you have a place to do it, as opposed to wait from Saturday to 2:00 to 4:00. Let me tell you how successful it was. We had a grand opening July 28th and 29th, and I usually don't, after talking to the mayor, I don't like to use numbers and statistics a lot, but I think this tells a story. In two days, we had 600 vehicles come through the center. They collected, they dropped off 35,000 pounds of electric waste and 2,500 gallons of used motor oil. Of the electric waste, 20,000 pounds of televisions, of which 900 were flat screens, 3,500 pounds of computers, and this one boggles my mind, almost 12,000 pounds of printers, copiers, and phones. That's stuff that would have ended up in the desert, because most people, when they clean their garage, don't wait till the next weekend to do it. They throw it in the trash can or do whatever. And what's even more, the creativity is, we take that stuff and sell it, and that money comes back to the City of Lancaster, and we use it to run the center and provide other services. So, I'd like to give a lot of credit to our Public Works Department and our whole staff for coming up with a, what sounds simple, but it saves the environment and makes money for the citizens. So, I just think it's an incredible project. And that was in two days. So, I want to give kudos to all of our staff for that.
Robert, you're an amazing man. I sincerely mean that. I'm always astonished.
I guess.
Okay. Like I said, bigger than Google.
Four years.
Four years. Well, they are laying off, you know. All right. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the city council, city manager, and city staff will be able to get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand, your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Teresa Malone.
As my almost-falling-down demonstrated, I'm flaring really bad with my fibro. I went out before dawn, an hour before dawn yesterday, to try and comply with Lan, excuse me, with code enforcement ticket number 124945. After 20 minutes, I couldn't stop shaking for five hours, because I wore myself out badly. I realized that when I left a message for Mr. Southworth, who wrote the ticket, that I was overwrought, but I had just found out that the only person who was going to help me had been hit by a car, with broken bones resulting. So, I have to do this by myself. I asked for clarification on some of the items in the ticket. I don't understand the term roof line. Does it mean the peak? Does it mean the eve? Does it mean the fascia board? Does it mean the top, the bottom, the middle? I don't understand that. Exactly what vegetation in relation to the roof line are they talking about? And what I asked for and still have not received, and this was a week ago that I asked for it, was an enlarged picture with it marked up as to where the roof line is, and an explanation in writing on the back, and which offending vegetation was impacting the roof line. I understand the problem that the city has with my vegetation in the front yard. It hasn't rained since, well, you know what, I can't remember when. So, it was all dead, they think. I was pulling stuff out yesterday. I thought new plants were growing in and amongst the dead stalks. It wasn't new plants in the dead stalks. It was live branches on the plants, and I had to kill them to comply with this. I'm entering several items into the fair. I'm going to the fair almost every night. I am entered in all the special baking contests. My days are filled from Friday on. If I can get an enlarged picture with the notations I've asked for in the mail, it usually takes one day. I can get it by Friday and plan things out for the three days after the fair, before my time runs out, and you start charging me $500 for being old, sick, and poor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, have somebody look into that, would you?
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Okay, that was all the speaker cards. Any comments from the council before we go into closed session?
Fair starts Friday.
Just let everyone know?
I think the weather's telling us that.
You know, so many things come to my mind, and I'm just biting my tongue. Okay, that's right, fair starts Friday. Everybody go. Everybody have a great time.
And don't forget the parade on Saturday. Mr. Mann?
Are you riding in the parade, Mr. Mann?
I guess I am. Do I? You?
No.
Oh, we should take the bear to the parade.
Yes.
I'm going to take my bear home. I really like that. I'm touched. All right. I have one announcement. Apparently, the, what is it, the Secropse Sewing and T-Cow, the Community Action League does not like the name of the Neighborhood Revitalization Commission. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, the Community Action League wants us to change the name of the Neighborhood Revitalization Commission. I think I will leave it up to the Neighborhood Revitalization Commission if they want to change their name. And if the staff could tell the chairman, I think it's Mr. Teraberry, isn't it, to ask his membership if they want to change their name, so that the Community Action League is satisfied. Or unsatisfied. It has really gotten, that's silly. I understand they do not have a suggestion, is that correct? We actually are spending how many thousands of dollars an hour having lawyers discuss that nonsense? I mean, how many law firms were on the phone where you had a discussion about changing the name of the Neighborhood Revitalization Commission?
Nine.
Nine law firms, billing at, in some cases, $1,100 an hour, wanting us to pay for that. That is one of the things we have to deal with in a few moments in closed session. Maybe we should call Aiken Gump and ask them if they want to attend the Neighborhood Revitalization Commission to help them pick a different name. What do you think?
Could certainly do that. I don't think they'll come.
Sometimes I am truly ashamed to be a lawyer. Rarely, but sometimes. Let's go.
Mr. Mayor, we do need to announce that we are going to closed session under government code section...
Okay. We will now recess to closed session to conference with legal counsel regarding potential litigation, one case, Government Code Section 54956.9B. I really got to read this, nobody has any idea what I'm saying. Conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Government Code Section 549569A, and, oh...
And the rest, you can refer to the agenda for the list of the cases.
Oh, let's refer to the agenda then.
Mr. Mayor, the council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9B concerning one potential litigation case. No action was taken on that. Under Government Code Section 54956.9A, concerning Palmdale versus Lancaster, gave direction concerning that case, as well as the T-Cow case, the Community Action League case. None of the other cases were discussed in closed session.
Thank you.
All right, the housing authority meeting is adjourned until August 28th, 2012.
City council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, August 28th, 2012, at 5:00 p.m. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home.